Through the Wyoming Valley West School District, regular meeting for May eighth at seven oh six. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. De Vaskus? Mr. Hardwick?
Here.
Mr. Keating?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Profetto?
Present.
Mr. Kebowski?
Here.
Mrs. Cassatt?
Here.
Mr. Camus?
Here.
There was an executive session held prior to this meeting to discuss a labor contract. Student representatives, Lilian Mahoney and Simone.
We're going to do the pledge.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation of God, made in this world. Sorry about that. I hit ahead of myself. You're excited.
Pretty much. Student representative, please.
Riley Geffert, Noah Hidkavich, Cole Hospidar, and Peyton Sprague were selected by faculty as seniors of the month for the month of May. The students were honored at a breakfast with a faculty guest of their choosing. They received a certificate from administration and their photograph will be featured in the local newspaper and on the high school webpage. Congratulations, seniors. Eleven Wyoming Valley West High School seniors are benefiting from the Luzerne and Lackawanna Education Opportunity Program at Kings College. This financial aid initiative for local first-time college students makes education affordable for families with an income of less than fifty thousand per year. Any student who qualifies for the program will have the reminder of their tuition and their fees paid on their behalf after financial aid is applied. Thank you to Kings College for making higher education possible for these students. This year, we had the following students placed on the national French exams. Well, Velis Reyes, Level One A, First in the Local Chapter, National Gold Medal winner. Casimir Glaude, Level Four A, First in the Local Chapter, National Honorable Mention winner. Salem Al Dashi, Level Five A, First in the Local Chapter. They were invited to an award dinner on May twenty presented by the American Association of Teachers of French Northeastern Chapter. Congratulations to the forty-five students participated by taking the exam and their teachers. The senior junior prom is Friday, May ten, from five thirty to ten at Gen Eight.
The spring Keystone schedule is as follows. Monday, May thirteenth is Biology Module One. Tuesday, May fourteenth is Biology Module Two. Wednesday, May fifteenth is Literature Module One. Thursday, May sixteenth is Literature Module Two. Friday, May seventeenth is Biology and Literature Makeups. Monday, May twentieth is Algebra Module One. Tuesday, May twenty-first is Algebra Module Two. And Wednesday, May twenty-second is Algebra Makeups. The high school music department is hosting the Spartan Arts Festival at the high school on Sunday, May nineteenth from one to seven P M. There will be music from two P M to six P M in various venues throughout our building, as well as displays by our visual arts department and the distribution of our interim literary arts magazine. Also, a variety of food trucks will be back. The schedule is two to three concert band in auditorium, three to four concert choir in the gymnasium, four to five orchestra in the auditorium, four fifty jazz band on the concourse, and six fifteen full choir in the gymnasium. Thank you to all your support for of the arts throughout the year. We hope to see you then. Senior student activities for the remainder of the school year are, on Wednesday, May twenty-second at seven P M, the senior awards ceremony will be in the high school auditorium. Thursday, May twenty-third is the senior tea at noon on the high school concourse. Wednesday, May twenty-ninth is this winter and spring sports awards in the auditorium at six P M. Thursday, May thirtieth is the senior cookout. Friday, May thirty-first is the senior trip to Six Flags Great Adventure. Monday, June third is senior reflection at three P M in the high school auditorium. Tuesday, June fifth is the senior class picture at the Spartan Stadium. Wednesday, June fifth is graduation practice at the Spartan Stadium. And Thursday, June seventh is the graduation ceremony at the Spartan Stadium at six P M. Best of luck to the class of twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Our title presentation, please.
Mr. Camus. Girls, hang on one second. I'm sorry. Before we move on, first of all, I do want to thank Lilian and Simone for all of your hard work over the year. And I should mention that traditionally, what the district will do on the last night for the girls, they choose a book and it goes into the library in their names. There are a little bit of pioneers this year as we're changing that up, that tradition, being that we are going to be having a STEM lab up in our high school. There'll be a tree, branches and leaves on the wall, and they will be the first names on that STEM tree. So you're pioneers moving forward with our STEM lab, so we want to thank you.
Debbie?
Good evening, school board members. Mr. Tosh, Mr. Kacharik, Mrs. Bullock, thank you so much. Attorney Messinger, thank you so much for allowing us to present a review of our school-wide Title One program. The school-wide Title One program inception began and is near conclusion for this school year. The Comprehensive Schoolwide Reform Initiative has brought a defining culture change and had a huge impact on our elementary schools in the delivery of Title One support services in reading and math. Our Title One teachers are now able to support all classrooms and grade levels K to five in all district elementary buildings. Title One and regular education teachers have found innovative ways and are collaborating to share their expertise in helping students learn and partnering with parents during very exciting evening programs, which many of you have attended. These are at State Street, Merry Math Night, and Dr. Zeus Literacy Night. Dana Street had Winter Literacy Night and Math Adventure. Chester and Third had a make and take night and a math carnival. These events attracted large numbers of families, their children, and community members, and offered hands-on learning opportunities for all participants. Our school-wide comprehensive plan requires each school's steering committee to identify challenges and set goals for improvement and growth. The principals are the leaders who drive the building programs. Title One coaches, Dan Amasholi, Russ Singer, collect and review data to share at weekly meetings. Tonight, the teams from each elementary school will cover the outcome of these goals, where growth is analyzed with data charts and commentary. An integral research-based intervention strategy of our school-wide program this year was the establishment of the win period. If you take a look at the win slide, the win period stands for what I need. So it is exactly what it says, whatever the students need. We establish a timeframe to differentiate and/or accelerate instruction with school-wide support from Title One teachers, technology coaches, in collaboration with classroom teachers. It is a period driven by data to remediate and practice skill development or to accelerate students to use higher-order thinking skills. Title One faculty have designed the win period intervention lessons and activities, and they use the P S S A standards to do so. At this time, I would like to introduce the principals of each building to come up, and that would be Mr. Tim Needle, State Street, Mr. Jeff Duraco, Dana and Chester, and Mr. Anthony Dikton, Third Ave. Along with the Title One teachers who will present their respective buildings' data.
Hi, good evening. Before I begin, I just want to acknowledge the State Street team who's here today. From Title One, I have Jamie Stinson and Michelle Brady, and then also, Miss Troy had mentioned, Dan Amasholi, our tech coach. They've really done a lot of work putting everything together. They're not the only ones, but I would like, since they're here, I want to acknowledge them. This slide that you're looking at right now, the State Street percentage ranked data, all this information is based on our Renaissance or STAR testing. What STAR testing is, and this is pretty much every slide that you'll see from now on from all the buildings, it measures student reading and math skills, monitors achievement and growth, tracks how well students comprehend, and is aligned with Common Core standards. The gist of this is, what you'll see in the red, that's the fall score, and then in the gold is our winter score. So fall was first, the red score was first, the winter score is in gold is second. The goal is for for the first two columns, which are urgent intervention and intervention, we want those numbers to go down. While the next two columns, which are on watch and at or above benchmark, we want those numbers to go up. If you're looking at the first block, early literacy, those are our youngest students, so we're talking kindergarten, some first-grade students. For urgent intervention, if you look going from red to gold, we had a two percent decrease in urgent intervention students. Intervention, the next column, we also had a two percent decrease. On watch, the third column, which is again, we want those two to go up, that increased by one percent, and then at or above benchmark, that increased by three percent. When you're going on to the next two columns, the reading and the math, those are our older students to take those. Reading, if you look at going from red to gold for urgent intervention, we had a five percent decrease. Our intervention students, we had a one percent decrease. And then our on-watch students, we had a one percent increase. The biggest jump was in our at or above benchmark, which is what we want. We had a five percent increase there. Moving on to math, same thing in the fall, we had a three percent decrease going from the fall to the winter in urgent intervention. In intervention, we had a four percent decrease. On watch, the third column, we went up two percent, and then at or above benchmark in math, we had a six percent increase. So our numbers are trending exactly the way we want them. They're moving in the right direction. If we go to the next slide. The next slide is State Street's achievement data. This is what we pull from that Renaissance testing. This essentially is our best predictor of where we are going to be when we take the state assessments to P S S A testing. In early literacy with our youngest students, now those students wouldn't take P S S A testing, but we still see a six percent increase in proficiency for our youngest students in early lit. If you're moving on to the next one with our oldest students, then these students would be taking, looking at taking the P S S A testing. In reading, we had a nine percent increase in proficiency. So that's our best predictor to sit there and say, we're going to have students on the P S S As who are going to end up being either proficient or advanced at the P S S As. And overall, we're looking at forty-one point one percent of our students being proficient in reading. And then lastly, we go on to the math, and in math, from winter, and I should have pointed this out, this is from last year's winter to twenty-two, twenty-three to this year's winter of twenty-three, twenty-four. So in a year, we had a six percent overall increase in proficiency in math as well. The gist of this is, the green is growing. If you look at the reading in the middle there, on the left side, winter twenty-two, twenty-three, you see the green blocks? From twenty-three, twenty-four, our green is getting bigger, and that's what our predictor is of being proficient or advanced on the P S S As. And we're seeing the same kind of trends also in math. At that point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Duraco for Dana Street and Chester.
All right, thank you. Dana Street, I'm just going to give the same data points for Dana Street and for Chester Street. On slide number one, the kindergarten with the urgent intervention scores decreased by sixteen percent from fall to winter. At or above benchmark scores increased by twenty-four percent. With our first through fifth grade, reading scores, urgent intervention decreased by seven percent. At or above benchmark stayed at fifty percent from fall to winter at Dana Street. But the decrease in the urgent intervention was a plus for us in the in reading. In math, first through fifth grade, our reading scores with the urgent intervention remained consistent at thirteen percent from fall to winter. At our at or above benchmark scores improved by four percent. Russ, next slide there. Again, the what we want to see is the trend of the green, the green bars increasing and the red bars shrinking. So we'll see that this that did happen here. From last school year to now, kindergarten, early intervention proficiency rates went up by twenty-three percent. First through fifth grade, reading proficiency rates increased by eight percent, showing an overall of fifty point eight percent of students are now showing proficiency in the achievement data. Our math scores, our first through fifth grade proficiency rates increased two percent, which puts us at a twenty-nine point five percent of students at proficiency on our STAR achievement. And that's at Dana Street Elementary. At Chester Street, first grade urgent intervention scores decreased by twenty-two percent fall to winter. At or above benchmark scores increased by thirty-five percent. Second through fifth grades, reading scores, urgent intervention decreased by four percent, at or above benchmark increased by eleven percent fall to winter. Second grade through fifth grade math scores, urgent intervention decreased by three percent, at or above benchmark increased by ten percent. And then our achievement data through STAR testing. Last year, this is from last year to now, grade, first grade, early literacy proficiency rates increased by thirty-five percent. Second through fifth grade reading proficiency rates increased by seven percent, putting us at an overall rating of forty-eight point four percent of students at or or at advanced when comparing to the STAR data as projected in our achievement data. Second through fifth grade with our math proficiency rates also increased by seven percent, which puts us at twenty-seven point three percent of students at proficient or advanced in comparing with the STAR data. Those are two Dana and Chester Street Alimentaries.
Good evening. Mr. Dikton, Third Ave Elementary, a little bit different with Third Ave because we're primarily all kindergarten students who are being tested on vocabulary, comprehension, phonics, and number recognition. A little bit different with our graphs. If you look at the three graphs, we did a baseline in that first column to your left. The colors being the same, red being our students that we need intervention and green being the students who are proficient. When testing in the winter, before we were fully a title building, and we were doing title two days a week out of the five-day cycle, we had made growth. We grew fifteen percent. Our red had dropped, as you see, and then in the spring, when we were giving them title services five days a week, we had tested a third time to look at that baseline from early on in the school year, and you can see our red is down now to seven percent. And we continue to show growth. Now, the goal for Third Ave is to now follow these kids next year when they go off to State Street and Chester Street and to continue, you know, to get students up into that green category. Thank you.
So the last piece that we have here is the district achievement data over the course of the whole district. So every building averaged out, we are showing something positive here.
This district data, sorry, this district data shows a nine percent increase on early literacy, a seven percent increase on the reading proficiency, a five percent increase on the math proficiency. These increases are a result of the win periods and the intervention strategies that we've been adopting throughout the year. With these in place, we're looking forward to coming back to a strong start next year and seeing higher increases.
Thanks to everyone. You know, we haven't made huge gains, but we've made gains and we're growing, and it's been a short amount of time. And what's wonderful about this is the teachers are buying into it, the regular ed teachers, the title teacher, everyone working together really benefits the students. So I just want to thank everyone, our tech coaches for their assistance, the principals, the Title One teachers, the school board for your support, Mr. Tosh for your ongoing commitment to school improvement, Mr. Navraki. He initiated our game-changing Foundation's reading program, which, working along with Title, has made a huge difference in our children's ability to read. Anthony Waskevich for tech support, and finally, Kim Walk, who has been the impetus for getting our district to school-wide and continuing to guide us on the path to increased growth and achievement for all students. So thank you very much, school board.
Thank you, Debbie, and thank you, everyone, for your presentation this evening. Clearly, it looks like the Breakfast Club works a little bit, huh?
Breakfast Club, all of them. And one of the things that we had said to the teachers from day one, and I can't say enough about what Debbie and Kim, the principals, the teachers, everybody's done, we realize that things aren't going to turn around in a day. So the goal was growth, and I think of all the slides and all the statistics that were put up, you see growth. And our goal is more growth next year and the following year and the following year. So I think the commitment that everyone has made is very impressive, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again, everyone. Mr. Tosh.
Three comments tonight. Thank you, Mr. Camus. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Kings College, and in particular, Dr. Jill Yurko, who's a former Wyoming Valley West School District Middle School English teacher, and Dr. Sunny Wyland for all of their help with our recently concluded Kids at Kings STEM program. This was the second year of the program that we first initiated last year, and the students and the parents have commented what a wonderful academic experience our students had at Kings College. Students with a G I E P or a Gifted Individual Education Plan attended four STEM sessions at Kings for specially-designed instruction and were taught by students at Kings who will be future educators. So thank you again to Kings College for the partnership that we have with them. Our summer academic enrichment camps, our principals send out remind messages this week. It'll also be rowboat on Sunday night. These camps will be held again this year. Information about the camps and the application for the camp are now posted on the district website. And finally, this is Teachers and Nurses Appreciation Week. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all Wyoming Valley West School District teachers, nurses, and nurse assistants for your dedication and your commitment to education, as well as the health, safety, and welfare of the Wyoming Valley West School District students. So thank you to teachers, nurses, and nurse assistants. Thank you, Mr. Camus.
Thank you, Mr. Tosh. Statements from interested citizens, we have Jacob Simonelli. I'm sorry if I hacked your name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Jacob Sintorana, and I'm here to talk to you about Mr. Kevin Hetrick. I believe, and I really believe that he is your best decision of hire for the musical, the Fall Musical of twenty twenty-five. I believe that there is no man, and I speak this from experience, I believe there is no man in the state capable of doing what he does and making the magic work. For you all, I have copies of his resume and lists of the works that he's acted in, as well as directed. And each and every one of these experiences, you can even look them up, have been hits. He generates sales, he brings in people, and he is able to really make people feel at home within the theater department. I myself was more recently, put myself out there in the department, and I was scared, and I felt like I was by myself and alone. And he did an excellent job at making me feel like I could pursue what I wanted in that. And that's all. I just wanted to speak from my heart to all of you. Thank you for listening to me. Yeah.
Thank you, Jacob. Thank you, Jacob, for your kind words. James Sinkevich?
Good evening. My name is James Sinkevich. This is my son Noah. We live in Plymouth. And I'm here to talk to you about, quite honestly, the disgrace of the elevators in the high school and even this school. But we won't go back those years from when Noah went to this school and was stuck in the basement in an elevator by himself, but that's another story. February twenty twenty-three, two weeks after my son got back to school after a ten-hour back surgery where they put rods in his back, the elevator at the Wyoming Valley West High School broke. We then had to carry Noah off the elevator and carry his chair, which is, for record, is over four hundred pounds, and cost over thirty thousand dollars. Then we go to this past October, the week of October nineteenth, I do believe it was October eighteenth that the elevator broke. Thankfully, they were able to get Noah to the second floor, and he was able to depart to school from the second floor. On October nineteenth, I emailed Mr. Tosh, and I always appreciate you getting back in a timely manner. On October nineteenth, my son went to school, was then notified that the elevator was still broken because nobody had told us the elevator was still broken. Therefore, he could not go to school that day. We were told by Mr. Tosh when he spoke to my wife on We were told by Mr. Tosh when he spoke to my wife on the phone that the elevators of the door would be fixed over Thanksgiving break. They were not. That brings us to April tenth. Elevator broke again. My son was on the second floor. He missed chemistry. He is in all honors classes. He missed chemistry. He missed a graded assignment. That brings us to April thirtieth of this year, which was just last week. I lost almost four hours of work time to be at the high school, so my son was stuck in the school once again. We had to carry him down two flights of stairs. And I had to wait three hours to see if we could get the elevator to move just enough to get his wheelchair from the third floor to the second floor. So that he could drive it out. On the following day, he could not go to school because the elevator was still broken. And that brings us to today, when the elevator at the high school broke once again. As my son was sitting in chemistry class, the teacher came up to him and said, they called me, said the elevator is broken again, but don't worry. Thankfully, they were able to get the elevator to move just enough to get him from the third floor to the second floor so that he could drive out of the building. We have spoken many times to many people. And quite frankly, as a family with a child of disability, my son cannot walk. He cannot even stand on his own power. We have spoken to multiple teachers, multiple administrators. And nothing gets done to fix the elevators. And we would like to know what the school is going to do so that my son can go to school in a safe environment and not have to worry about being stuck in a school.
I think, so, I think, so I'd like to deeply apologize to you, Noah. Um, you know, I promise you, you have this board's commitment that we will do better. Uh, and to your father, James, I mean, we, we will do better. Um, we had a meeting today. Our engineers are looking into this. Um, we, we are hoping to update this car. Um, we are actually looking into putting security badges on to, so we don't have frequent riders on our elevators. Using it and abusing it more than what should be done. Um, again, I, I promise you, there, there, there is a resolve coming. I just don't know exactly as to when this will happen. Hopefully, by the time he comes back to school next year, uh, but we are definitely looking into it.
I appreciate, as I told Mr. Tosh on the phone, I know things may not be able to fix by the end of this school year because there's only five weeks left. But it is something that needs to be permanently addressed instead of putting Band-Aids on it.
Hundred percent.
So.
And, and Noah, we apologize deeply. We, we should be doing better as a district, one hundred percent.
So, thank you.
Anyone else would like to Mr. address?
I, I just wanted to say, Mr. Kamis, that we're going to be holding a special budget meeting within the next two weeks and uh, that's going to become a priority to either permanently restore or replace that, that elevator.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Keating, under uh, do you have anything to speak?
Well, one, one, one thing I just mentioned, uh, Mr. Kamis, is that we will be holding a special budget meeting within the next two weeks. Our, our uh, business uh manager is working on that right now along with some other staff. Uh, we're also working with the superintendent on identifying vacancies and positions that may be needed uh, for the coming school year. And I'd like to commend all of the staff tonight for the great title uh, presentation and all the improvements that you all made over the year.
Thank you, Mr. Keating, very much. Uh, Mr. McGinley, you have anything this evening?
On education?
Yes.
Yeah, couple items, and I know this is a repeat of last week. Number one, you know, as you can see, there's a whole list of policies. And this is a result of meetings and offering the young lady an opportunity to provide input. And you can see we're moving along and that's a lot of work to get done there. And then the other item, again, it's a re- repeat from last week. Mr. Shook has worked with people to come up with a elementary math program for beginning next year. He had a great committee that worked hard together and really took all the different levels into consideration. And I think his recommendation, committee's recommendations, well done.
Thank you. Mr. Hardwood, do you have anything?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Two things. One, the Special Education Committee did meet prior to our work session. Um, I don't have the exact date. But we met and we discussed several due process cases that um are currently on um, on the agenda. In addition, um, with regards to my ESRS report. Um, obviously, if anybody was here last week, you could hear a lot of construction going on above us. Uh, that continues, but it's a bit quieter this week. So the HVAC and the roof construction are continuing and they will so throughout the summer. The STEM lab tutoring construction will also continue through the summer. And ESRS funds will be offering uh the summer academic camps. Those three camps are uh elementary will offer reading, math and STEM program camps. Middle and high school will offer academic enrichment camps. And the middle school and high school will also offer online credit recovery camps. But unless anybody has any questions, that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Hardwood. Mr. Dixon, you have anything this evening under safety? Thank you. Under buildings and grounds, um, as I said to Mr. Sincavich, there was a buildings and grounds meeting today. Uh, we had a very two-hour-long discussion, Mr. Tosh, Mr. Chark, with our engineers about a lot of the some of these issues that we are having in our district and they are going to be working on them. Um, we discussed in great detail the construction project in this, inside this building. The high school and uh future project that we are looking at for Dana Street. Exciting things coming. A lot of exciting things coming. I have a motion to approve of the minutes from April tenth, twenty twenty-four.
So, second.
Hold in favor? Uh, under general recommended action items, may I ask for a motion, please?
I, I have a question, uh, number thirty-nine.
Can we get a motion first? Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Second, on the question.
Uh, question number thirty-nine or number thirty-nine Northeast Pride?
Yes.
Um, I don't know if that's, Brian's not here to present what the offer was.
Correct.
Do we know?
So, so it's, it's up to this board if we decide to table it. I don't have that number. Um. I, I just think that whatever we do, we have to make sure we do it for everybody going forward.
And make a motion to table because we don't have all the
Second.
pertinent information.
I have a roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Hardwick?
On, on the question, this is to table number thirty-nine. Yes.
Mr. Keating?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Profetto?
Yes.
Mr. Kabuski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassatt?
Yes.
Mr. Kamis?
Yes.
So under gen- general recommended action items, we have numbers one through thirty-nine now. There's thirty-nine items under general. There's a motion to table. Have another motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Hardwick?
Yes.
Mr. Keating?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Profetto?
Yes.
Mr. Kabuski?
Yes.
S- Satt? Yes, Mr. Kamis.
Yes.
Uh, staff recommended action items, items one through uh thirteen. I have a motion, please.
So moves.
Second, a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
I have a question on the brief.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table that one as well.
What was the number again? Could you repeat it?
Number eight. Director of Operations.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
On the table, can I question?
Sure.
Could you provide a little bit on tabling or just re-table?
I provided that last meeting. I do not believe that description is correct.
Okay.
I don't agree with that description.
It's the job description in question?
Uh, there's some other things, yes.
Could you elaborate, please?
Oh, I think that it's too close to the position that we already have that a staff member is not with us right now, he's on leave.
I, Mr. Kamis, I'd like to add, I, I, I think it expands significantly on, on the position that we have and after listening this evening to uh, the complaints being brought forward about the elevator. Uh, the, the issues that we, we've had for, for years now about the condition of our, of our buildings, our grounds, our facilities. Uh, I, I think the position is, is, is dearly needed. I know I, I, I support it.
You are saying you want to table the job description itself or the job?
I'd like to table it for this meeting until we could discuss this a little bit more in detail.
With all due respect, that we've already been waiting over a month with no feedback from the board. On a roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Hardwick?
Not sure what I'm voting on. Tabling or voting? No, no table.
Mr. Keating?
No on tabling.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Profetto?
No.
Mr. Kabuski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassatt?
No.
Mr. Kamis?
No.
Motion to table uh fails. Staff recommended action item number eight will stand, stay on our agenda.
So now there's a motion on the second on all of the staff recommended actions and I'll make that second. To approve all of the staff recommended actions as listed on the agenda. There's a motion by Mr. Keating, we have to second by.
So it'll be item one through thirteen.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Hardwick?
Yes.
Mr. Keating?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Profetto?
Yes.
Mr. Kabuski?
Yes, except for number eight.
Mrs. Cassatt?
Yes.
Mr. Kamis?
Yes.
Finance recommended action items. Uh, I have motion for bills for payment.
Motion.
Managers report and the treasurer's report. A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Hardwick?
Yes.
Mr. Keating?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Profetto?
Yes.
Mr. Kabuski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassatt?
Yes.
Mr. Kamis?
Yes.
Mr. Puchard, do you have anything you'd like to add this evening or?
No, just that again, we will be having an additional special meeting once the budget is complete.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Puchard. Uh, go around the table, board members' comments. Mr. McGinley?
No, I think at this time I did what I had to. Thank you.
Mr. Kabuski?
I'd just like to add, uh, I thought we had a great meeting this morning and I do want to add that the elevators were addressed or brought up in both buildings. So the board is definitely looking at that. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Profetto?
Yes, I would personally like to thank all the teachers uh for all their hard work within this district. I know they work very hard. I've visited several of the schools and uh they do have a, a tough job at times, but I'd like to thank them for what they've been doing. And also, secondly, the concert or the orchestra that was here last night. I understand, I unfortunately did not get to make it. But my feedback was it was an excellent program for the middle school students to put on.
We do a great job.
I would thank them.
Really do. Anything else, Mr. Profetto?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wilson?
If I may, Mr. Kamis, I'd just like to thank all the Title One um staff here that put on um the events over the school year. I had the opportunity to attend multiple and they were all amazing events. Um. And truly, it's, it's good to see the statistics. Your hard work is paying off. So I really appreciate that. Um, and thank you to all the teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, we have some talented educators here at Wyoming Valley West and uh I just want to thank you all for your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Uh, Mr. Hardwick?
Um, exactly what Mr. Wilson just said to all the staff from Mr. Tosh down for putting together the work um through title. Obviously and clearly, it's, it's becau- being positive and it's moving in a forward direction. All the indicators were where you would want to see them moving. So I think that's um I think that's worth an extra note. And again, thanks to Kim Walk for helping with the group um, to work toward these initiatives. We touched base last week real quickly. Turf installations completed. Thanks to Brian, uh, the AD Gil for putting everything together and having that done in time for commencement. So that should be a um, a big plus. And I'll just explain very quickly. On my question on tabling number eight, I think if, if what we heard tonight isn't important enough to move forward, then I'm not sure what is. We need, we need to get someone in place. And we're in a situation where we need to move and move in the best consideration of the district as a whole. I think putting the position in place as the title goes is the most important thing to get forward. Obviously, Mr. Tosh, a successful candidate can tweak what's been, what's done and the job description itself. Um, but it's, as Mr. Kamis said, it, we can't go forward any longer without getting somebody in this position to take care of the buildings, the grounds and oversee everything that needs to be done. So that's my comments for tonight. But again, thank you to all the staff for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Hardwood. Uh, Mr. Keating?
I have nothing further this evening, Mr. Kamis.
Thank you, sir.
Just a great big thank you to all the faculty, staff, the Title One presentation, great numbers. Um, keep up the good work. Thank you, thank you. And yes, I agree, the buildings have been, you know, not taken care of through many, many years. So we need to rectify the elevator situation and a lot of others going forward. So we're on the right path and I think we're doing a good job. So thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, Mr. Tosh, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yep, but thank you.
Just under me, I, I'm action item number eight. Uh, historically, there has been uh, a lead position and a system position in this, uh, in multiple admin positions that we have throughout this district. That they have gone, fallen vacant for many years and never been refilled. Um, I don't know why, can't answer for passports, but I think, I think uh, this board made a very positive step forward for this district this evening. Thank you, everyone. Um, our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, June fifth, seven o'clock here. And the week later will be Wednesday, June twelfth at seven PM. We have a motion to-